Good evening, everyone. We're gonna get Mr. Lavender on.
I'm on.
Hi, Jeff.
Hey, Craig, how you doing?
Good, you're live.
Okay.
And there's a lot of people here, so don't say anything.
Still quiet.
All right, welcome, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting on December 20th. Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everybody, since this is Christmas week. And just wanna remind everybody to be safe out there, and then we'll call the meeting to order. First order of business tonight is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Do we have anybody from the alliance here? If not, I may pull on Mr. Herman to do the invocation tonight, and then we'll please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for being with us tonight and watching over our meeting. Please help guide us to make the decisions that are best for those in our community. We also ask that you watch over our community and bless all of us that are here and everywhere, and also especially our first responders, our police, fire, medical people here, and then, of course, our armed forces in the United States and in other countries. We also ask that, you know, you just keep, keep the whole world in your care this, this next couple of weeks, especially over this special time in the Christmas season and, and the holiday season for everyone else. And we ask these in your name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Could you join me while we slid our flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell, thank you, Mr. Herman. And let the roll call show that all members are present. We have Mr. Lavender present via teleconference.
So noted.
Okay, next item is our minutes.
There are minutes.
There are many minutes.
Yes, let me go ahead and start off with a couple of them. Consider the approval for the city council's special meeting minutes of December 6, 2021. Consider the approval of the city council regular meeting minutes of December 6, 2021. Same day, I don't know why there's two of them, but consider accepting the planning and zoning commission minutes from November 4, 2021. Consider accepting the Casa Grande Youth Commission minutes from October 23. Consider accepting the Casa Grande Unit Commission minutes. Consider accepting the Casa Grande Police Personnel Retirement Board minutes from October 21, and consider the, accepting the Casa Grande Police Personnel Retirement Board minutes November 11, and I move that they are approved as, as presented.
Second. All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right, so that any nays, okay. The motion carries, thank you, Mr. Powell. Next is our item is claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated December 1 through 14, 2021, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right, the claims have been approved. Item E is our meeting agenda approval. Mr. Rains, do we have any changes from staff? Anybody at the dais here? All right, seeing none, then I will ask for approval of our meeting agenda as presented.
Is that moved? Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right, any opposed? Meeting agenda is approved. Next, we have our special presentation after our amazing 2021 Electric Light Parade Awards, so hopefully all of you are here for that. And I'll meet Mr. Hardisty down in front here.
Sure. Before we start recognizing the, the award winners for tonight, I do want to say a few thank yous. First, a thank you to the mayor of the council, the city manager's office, for our support, guidance, and direction. Also, all the departments really of the city are involved in the Electric Light Parade in one way or the other, so we're really excited to all work together to produce that event. There was over 100 volunteers and over 500 parade participants and over 70 parade entries, so obviously a very big event, and thousands of citizens enjoyed it. And so tonight's a great night to recognize the winners. So anybody that's here to, to win, we will have certificates for the second and third place categories. We will have ribbons for you at a later date that we'll deliver to you. And then the first place awards, we do have trophies here. So we'll just start off with the biggest and brightest, which is the Best Use of Lights, overall design, special effects, and displays. And third place is the Desert Sky Mustang Club.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to come.
He looks really happy.
Yeah, stand right here, and they're taking them from the crow's nest up there, so here, I'll let you hold that. How's that? You've gotta look up, though. Congratulations.
Second place is Casa Grande Jewelry and Pawn. Anybody here from that group? And first place in biggest and brightest is Cardinal Glass.
They always have a great one.
That was really cool.
Congratulations.
Best Public Safety, third place is the Coolidge Fire Department. Second place is the Arizona City Fire Department.
Good to see you. Hi, Chief. How are you? Yeah, why don't you guys get in the middle, and we'll... Looks like you're the prettiest one. All right, congratulations.
And first place in Best Public Safety is Eloy Fire District. All right, Most Festive is Captures the Holiday Spirit, Use of Lights, Music, and Costumes. Third place is Casa Grande FFA. Second place is the CGMS Wildcat Cheer.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Oh, your cheer.
I like that hat.
You hold that, you guys hold that.
I didn't want them sick for their winter break.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And first place in Most Creative, or excuse me, Most Festive is Youth on Track Cycling. All right, we'll hold that one and get it to them. Next is Creative, Most Creative Costumes, Unique Costumes ties into the theme of the float. Third place is North Dakota Natives. Second place, K&amp;M Roofing. And first place is the Studio of Dance.
Bob and you, I've been there, haven't we?
They were busy with the Nutcracker, I believe, so, um, yes. Now we're into the Most Original, which is Unique, Creative, and Innovative. Third place, Boy Scouts of America Pack 948. Second place is Boy Scouts of America Pack 919.
Congratulations. Why don't you guys stand right here? Here, you hold that, okay?
It's really fun to see all the youngsters in there.
So we can see your face. Congratulations.
The last three only have first place winners. This is the APS Power to Make It Happen Award. Is there anybody here from APS to present this award? Okay, so Best Use, Best Use of Lights, Visual Appeal is Casa Grande FFA. Beautiful award, by the way.
The newest member.
We'll have some deliveries this week.
Mayor, turn it this way, so we can see the award.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
The next one is the People's Choice Award, that's voted on by the community through our website. Also Casa Grande FFA, so they had a great night. And then the Mayor's Award for the Best of Show Creating the Biggest Wow Factor is Powerhouse Fitness. Yes, and that's all the awards, Mayor.
Hey, Steve. Steve, there was one, we had a third and a second in the Boy Scout, but I don't think we gave a first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Most, most original, yes, I skipped that one. Most original is also Powerhouse Fitness, so Powerhouse Fitness won two. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're smart, they're leaving.
I'm gonna go ahead with the consent agenda. Do you have any issues with any of them? You're good? Okay. All right, we'll move to item G, which is Consent Agenda Items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. So tonight's consent agenda items, is there any one in the dais that wants to remove anything?
None.
Okay, anybody from the public? All right, then I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in two seconds. So Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote? I don't think you heard.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
That's timing, that is timing, perfect.
All right. Next item is item H, which is our public comments. This is a point in the meeting that we allow the public to address the council. And we also have a speaker who has filled out a speaker card, so I'm gonna let them go first. And these are two members of our youth commission. I, I know them. Anthony and Delaney, would you guys, oh, you're already there.
So hi, I am Delaney Dickey. I am the president of the Casa Grande Youth Commission.
And give, give us your address, and then, and your, oh, you already gave us your names, so give us your... Don't have to? Oh, never mind. I was told never mind. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, and I'm Anthony Amato, Secretary of the Casa Grande Youth Commission. We're here today just to offer some updates on a few of our projects. One of them being the focal event of this term, the Arizona Youth Government Summit. We would like to thank the local businesses that ha, we have requested sponsorships from, and we hope that they make the decision to make this event the best it can be. We would also like to thank those that have been providing their ongoing guidance in this effort, such as Councilwoman McBride and Councilman Herman and our great advisors team, as well as the mayor. We would like to thank the officer, the offices that we are reaching out to to serve as workshop leaders and speakers for our event that we will hopefully be providing some exciting updates on in the near future.
We would also like to give some updates on the Heart of Casa Grande Scholarship that the Casa Grande Youth Commission do, does. The application for the Heart of Casa Grande Scholarship will open in March. March 7 is our drafted date for that. The youth commission members are beginning their process of filming their own videos of the, their own miles monuments across Casa Grande, so we are looking forward to sharing those with you guys as well.
We would also like to thank the Casa Grande Chamber of Commerce for awarding our commission the Community Service Award for 2021, and we would like to thank Councilwoman McBride for nominating our commission for that.
All right.
Congratulations.
So thank you, and once again, as always, we look forward to working with the mayor and council for the rest of this term.
Great, thank you both. All right, the floor is still open. Is there anyone else here tonight who didn't fill out a speaking card but would like to address the council? Okay, seeing no one, then I will close the floor, and we'll move on to item I, which is Award of Contracts. First one is I-1.
Thank you. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council award a contract for professional services to Atlas Technical Consultants for the final design and construction documents for the city's constructed underground recharge facility in an amount not to exceed $346,460. This does include a city-controlled contingency of $10,000. Staff is using this consultant, they were originally Hydro Systems Incorporated, and they were the company that originally did the designs for this project up to 30%. And then we shelved the project until such time we wanted to take it to final design. And based on our 6 million gallon a day discharge limit and the fact that we are now discharging up to that amount, we now need to look for additional discharge in that area. And so we are gonna be taking this, this project to final design and construction drawings so that we can put that project out on the street. Most likely gonna be coming back to city council once we finish our selection project for a construction manager at risk, so that we can move this project along and potentially start constructing it prior to finishing final designs, because there's gonna be a lot of earthwork involved around that. The Atlas, Atlas Technical Consultants purchased Hydro Systems, but we're very fortunate to have the, the two principals from Hydro Systems still working on the project. So it made the most sense to continue working with that group to bring this to final design and get it constructed. We did budget for this project in this year, so we do have adequate funds budgeted in this year's budget, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Bob?
Kevin, with growth being what it is, are, are we able to take advantage of perhaps investing in, in more capacity than we need right now for the future?
Well, our, our current plant is, is designed to handle 12 million gallons a day, and we are currently in the process of evaluating what improvements need, need to be made to make sure that when we have those flows, our plant can treat that. Clearly, we're not using the entire plant right now, and we've deferred some improvements, so now we're ramping some of those improvements up. And I think if you'll, you'll look at our budget this year and probably the budget in the next few years, you'll see some of those things that we're ensuring that we have the plant capacity to manage that. The one capacity issue we're dealing with right now, and probably the most important one, is our discharge capacity. So we're able to discharge into the north branch of the Santa Cruz Wash, and that's what we call our, our managed facility. So everything that is recharged in that six to eight mile stretch of our, our permitted recharge area, we get credit for that in long-term, excuse me, I can't talk tonight, long-term storage credits. So this project will be to build a series of five ponds just north of the, of the wastewater plant and just immediately west of Dave White Park, and we'll be able to recharge in that location. That'll give us about 2.3 million gallons a day additional capacity. On the heels of this, we're going to be coming forward with several other projects, looking at both injection wells where we can inject right back into the, the water table, and we're also gonna be looking at opportunities to bring water to other reuse users. So we'll be looking at those capabilities as well, so a lot going on at once.
So this project basically gives us about 2.6 million buffer, 2.3 buffer off of our six max. Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you, Kevin. Seeing no more questions, then I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5364. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting their proposal for professional services from ATC Group Services LLC, DBA Atlas Technical Consultants LLC for final design and construction documents for the city's constructed underground recharge facility, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number 5364 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yep.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, item I-2.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Ellison Mills Contracting LLC for a base bid amount of $36,521 and a contingency of $3,479 for an amount not to exceed $40,000. And this is a, a, the 20, excuse me, the 2020 CDBG Sidewalk Improvement Project. This is a continuation of our program where we go out and we identify those areas in our community that need sidewalk and handicap ramp improvements. And we've really focused on our parks in the past and trying to develop that connectivity into those park facilities so that those that are handicapped or challenged in any way have no restrictions on getting into those locations. This year's project is for the Cruz Park and the West Park. And this will hopefully provide that access that's needed in those areas. Again, this is part of our CDBG five-year consolidated plan of action, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, and Ellison Mills was the low bid on that. I don't know if I made that clear.
Yeah, good to see they got it. As they're a local company. Anybody have any questions? Comments? Okay, thank you, Kevin. Seeing none, I'll call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5365. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Ellison Mills Construction LLC to provide construction of the Program Year 2020 Community Development Block Grant Sidewalk Improvement Project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, move for approval of resolution number 5365 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yep.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell?
Yes, and I just wanted to, to say thank you for the sidewalks that are becoming absent and are getting a place in our community again, and, and they're sure needed.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, the next item is I-3, again, Public Works Director.
Thank you. Staff is recommending that the mayor and city council authorize an intergovernmental agreement with Penale County in which the parties agree to share a 50% cost share in the total construction costs of the project. This will be to construct a chip seal type road surface on three roads. This will be Clayton Road, Ethington Road, and Burris Road. If you'll recall, or if you read in the paper of late, there is a project area called the Penale Tech Park. This is just south of the railroad tracks, Maricopa CG Highway, and it sits between Burris and Ethington. So this area is developing with, with industrial development, and this is the Phase 1 of the roadway project. And because the roadways are, are shared jurisdiction between Penale County and the city of Casa Grande, we've agreed to share the costs on this project. So this IGA just outlines the, the cost share of that. It's estimated that this portion of the project will be $1 million, so each entity's share will be $500,000 to cover that cost. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
And that's to chip seal it all the way down to Hila Bend Highway?
Yes, so that would be, I'm sorry, I did not give the south boundary, yes. Hila Bend Highway on Burris and Ethington North to the, basically the railroad tracks, and then Clayton, which is the east-west road between Burris and Ethington.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Kevin. I'll entertain an ordinance number, please, Gloria, for I-3.
Ordinance number 3317. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Casa Grande and Penale County to define responsibilities for the construction of... responsibilities for the construction of Clayton Road, Ethington Road, and Burris Road, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of an agreement.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approval of ordinance number three, three, one, seven as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yep.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is, again, the Public Works. Item I four.
Thanks, we're just asking for a very large blank check, in essence, but, um, staff is recommending that the mayor and city council authorize a purchase of all replacement and new vehicles included in the fiscal twenty-two, uh, budget, in an amount not to exceed the authorized spending limit, uh, for each of those items. Uh, we find ourselves in a very unique situation, uh, when it comes to purchasing vehicles this year, and we're not sure if some of the vehicles that we've already asked for autho- authority to purchase and have under contract are going to be delivered or not. And as we navigate through this, uh, process, we're finding we may need to take advantage of opportunities as they present themselves, as we go through this purchase process, and we want to make sure that staff has every availability to take advantage of any of those options, as long as it's within the, the budget amounts that we've established in this year's budget, or with reasonable transfers to deal with any, uh, cost overruns, but making sure that it's still within, uh, budget. So we're asking for a blanket authorization to purchase the list of vehicles, which was on that list, uh, that was attached to this RCA, and then it gives a brief description of that. We didn't get into a lot of detail on the, the exact vehicles for each of the departments or divisions that are going to be using these. Uh, for instance, when we looked at police vehicles, we're asking for authority to buy a, something within the police platform. That could be a pickup truck, that could be, uh, one of the Tahoe SUVs, or something else that we're able to find that meets the, uh, police department's needs. And the same thing with the other, uh, departments throughout the city. You know, we're looking for F-150 pickup trucks, but, you know, we may have to look for other types of vehicles that may, uh, cert- fit the needs of each of those departments. So it is a, a blanket authorization, just to give us as much flexibility to manage through this weird time that we find ourselves in when we deal with procurement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, just one question. So this authorization goes how long?
Until we finish purchasing these vehicles, so...
Okay, so it fits with this particular request for these vehicles?
So like with, with some, um, authorizations that we receive to move projects forward, sometimes we're able to finish those within the fiscal year, and sometimes we're having to roll some of those projects over. We've started them, but we've not completed them. This is one of those situations where it may take twelve to eighteen months to get some of these vehicles that we've already ordered. We may or may not get those vehicles at the time of, uh, promised delivery, and that's when we're going to need to be looking for other alternatives. So this could be a multi-year project, but it's only for these vehicles.
And they're all CIP replacement vehicles, right?
Yes, new vehicles and replacement vehicles that were identified.
So just that list, there's like thirty, thirty vehicles or whatever are there, so...
Whatever was authorized for this year's CIP. Any other questions from anybody? All right, thank you, Kevin. This is just to allow us to be a little more quick on our feet, so it doesn't have to go through six weeks, or eight, well, six to seven weeks at city council. Uh, all right, then I'll call for a resolution number for I four, please, Gloria.
Resolution number five, three, six, six. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the purchasing of budgeted vehicles, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing the transfer of budget authority, and authorizing the execution of agreements, purchase order contracts, and all other necessary documentation by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number five, three, six, six as presented?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yep.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right. I five, this is also Public Works?
And I know this is a vehicle, so this was not included on the list, and that was for a reason. Uh, staff is recommending that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with Freight Liner of Arizona in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, and I, we're also asking for a fifteen percent contingency of twenty-two thousand one-hundred-and-forty-five dollars to, uh, purchase a, a twenty-twenty-three Freight Liner, uh, Cascadia semi-truck for the use at the city's wastewater division. We separated this project out because the second portion of this project is the five trailers that are needed, that will haul our solids materials from the, uh, wastewater plant after we process those, out to our landfill where we use those as an alternative cover for our landfill. Uh, we're permitted to do that, uh, both from our wastewater permitting side, as well as our landfill permitting side, to, uh, take advantage of those materials. Um, again, we, we need to place the order for this truck, and at the end of this, we don't know whether that truck will be delivered or not. Um, they've stopped taking orders, but we wanted to get authorization to, uh, move forward with this purchase, so we can at least start that project. And again, uh, based on the pricing changes that we're seeing in the market today, we feel that fifteen percent contingency gives us some wiggle room if we need to increase the cost of, uh, that piece of equipment. We are asking, uh, authorization to use the Arizona State Contract, uh, number CTR-041810, or any other, um, purchase process that we find available when we do find the vehicle, when we're ready to purchase it. So, um, this is the one that we're, uh, moving forward with, the state contract, but there could be a need to, uh, change, uh, what method we use to, uh, procure that vehicle. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone?
Just a, a quick, Kevin, as far as this, this includes one new employee, or somebody within our employment already?
No, through our budget process, we did, uh, we did increase, uh, uh, an equipment operator for the wastewater operation as part of this. We will not be hiring that person until we know we're going to have delivery of that equipment.
Is this something we contracted before?
Yeah, we're currently under contract with the company. Uh, as soon as we get this equipment, then...
We're going to take it in-house, basically?
Correct.
The transportation of the material.
And if, if the vehicles aren't, uh, delivered in a timely manner, or we're not able to find those, you'll probably see us renewing that contract, uh, come the first of the next fiscal year.
Okay. Jeff, I keep forgetting to ask you, since you're kind of not here. Any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, seeing no other questions, then I'll call for a resolution number for I five, please.
Resolution number five, three, six, seven. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Freight Liner of Arizona LLC for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-three Freight Liner Cascadia semi-truck, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Freight Liner of Arizona LLC.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number fifty-three, sixty-seven as presented?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yep.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Kevin. We'll move to item K, and we'll start with item K one. This is your ordinances, resolutions, and other matters or subjects requiring action by the council. We've, we've discussed these. Um, Gloria, do you want to just relist each one, each ordinance, and then if there's some discussion, uh, can we have some discussion on that?
Yes, of course. It's a second read, you can discuss, but you want to do them one at a time.
Right, got it. So I'll call for ordinance, uh, ordinance on K one, please.
Ordinance number one-one-seven-eight-point-one-seven-five-point-one. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance one-one-seven-eight and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development to multifamily residential on property generally located at the southwest corner of Penala Avenue and Rodeo Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Okay, so, um, the reason these are back on here is because they were not unanimously voted on, so as a second read, uh, so I want to give the council an opportunity, if there's any comments that, you know, you might want to make on each one.
Should we make a motion first, then we can have a discussion?
Make a motion first.
But you can make a motion in a second.
Or have a discussion.
On the floor, but before you vote, if you want to allow comment.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead. Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number one-one-seven-eight-point-one-seven-five-point-one.
Second.
All right, so before we vote, if there's any comments on this, now would be the time to speak up. Mr. Powell, did you want to say anything? I was talking to you.
Well, I, as I say, I'm, I'm concerned with the, uh, that we're getting so many of the R twos, uh, in the different companies that are building. And one of the things that I think we have to really compliment our planning department for is compatibility is one of the things they want to be aware of now. And I think it's important, uh, consistency and incapable of harmonious union, which we need to be able to work like that, so, um, as I say, I think that, uh, hopefully they will, they will space out a little bit. If they're not compatible, one of the worst things that happens is if you get a, uh, something that starts building next to somebody else that's either had, didn't have good house, or had a house that was really fancy and had a lot of money in it, and if it's not compatible next to that, you've got problems from there on. So I, I just would encourage, uh, Paul, uh, to, uh, where possible, to be, to be compatible about where they're placed. I know there's places they can be very different, out on the, uh, south side of Scout South School, and on the north side both, would be a good location for them, but, uh, so anyway, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, and just a side comment on that, is that I, I think that the planning and zoning group has also done a good job of adjusting some of the, upping the, the open space requirements, which allows for a little better mix of housing in that particular development. I know they've increased it to twenty percent, uh, which, which I think is appropriate, and it, it gives them some opportunities in that development to have some spacing and some open spaces for, for the community, so. And I think that's important, and I think in line with, I think, you know, what you'd like to see as well.
You know, and, and I agree, and I, I understand the concern that you have, and of course, the last meeting, we, you know, had, you know, what, four projects, the R two, um, but I, you know, I hope to see in the future that this isn't all we're getting too, you know?
Sure.
I really do. Um, you know, but right now we do have a, um, a demand for housing, and, and we talk a lot about diverse opportunities, you know, housing, uh, opportunities for people, so this is not for everyone, you know, these types of developments, but, uh, but it, but it's good, there, there's definitely a need for, for this type of hous- housing product, especially with the high cost of, of housing these days. So I'm happy to see that we're bringing projects like this, but I am hoping we get regular, you know, big, you know, bigger lots and, you know, subdivisions too.
Back to some more planned area development type stuff, too.
Right, exactly.
I agree with a hundred percent of what you said, and I think that, uh, hopefully, if we can, get them spread out a little bit in different places. It, years ago, the, the, uh, the, uh, housing thing was full of, uh, house trailers, or, and, uh, a lot of people griped about them and whatever, but it, you know, one of the things that we have to keep in mind, too, is, is we've got some high-paid people that work on Thornton Road, and they're going to be looking for the other parts. Well, I think we need to do both, and I think you agree a hundred percent with that, so...
Anybody else have any comments or questions? All right, then, um, we've already called for the questions, so Gloria, would you please, uh, do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yep.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, let's move to item K two. This is a similar situation, this is a final adoption. And so, um, we will, uh, I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number one-one-seven-eight-point-two-zero-nine-point-two. An ordinance of the city council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance one-one-seven-eight and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development to multifamily residential on property generally located north of Cortson Road and Casa Grande Avenue, between Penala Avenue and Truca Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number one-one-seven-eight-point-two-zero-nine-point-two as presented?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this matter? You okay?
No.
Okay. All right, seeing no further discussion, then I'll, uh, call for a, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lavender?
Yep.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next is item K three. Again, a, a final adoption, uh, for ordinance number one-one-seven-eight-point-two-four-seven-point-one. So I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number one-one-seven-eight-point-two-four-seven-point-one. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance one-one-seven-eight and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development to multifamily residential on property generally located at the southwest corner of McCartney Road and Truca Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number one-one-seven-eight-point-two-four-seven-point-one as presented?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yep.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell?
I'm not excited about this, but we need to move forward, so yes, so these guys can get busy.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Sorry, that was a yes. All right, next item is K four, again, a final, uh, considering a final adoption for, uh, the ordinance that we have discussed. Um, I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number one-one-seven-eight-point-two-two-nine-point-two. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number one-one-seven-eight and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development to multifamily residential on property generally located north of Cortson Road and west of Pitt Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number one-one-seven-eight-point-two-two-nine-point-two as presented?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Uh, any final discussion on this? All right, seeing none, then I'll call for a roll call vote, please, Gloria.
Councilmember Lavender?
Yep.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, the last K item is considering approval of a resolution that's going to create our temporary Casa Grande Charter Review Committee, and... create our temporary Casa Grande Charter Review Committee and authorizing the appointment of committee members. So, Mr. Raines?
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, sorry, Stephen.
It's all right.
Mr. Weaver?
Staff recommends that the mayor and city council create and appoint a seven-member committee for the purpose of reviewing the city charter and making recommendations to the city council. The Casa Grande city charter was written and adopted in 1975. The charter has been amended only once in 2007. In 2007, a committee was formed and recommended amendments to the city council. The proposed amendments accepted by council were then sent to and approved by the voters in the May 2007 election. That committee also recommended that the charter be looked at periodically to keep up with an ever-changing world and to make us as efficient as possible. So the proposed makeup of the committee will consist of the following members: Bob Jackson, Michael Cruz, Rebecca Romo, Donovan Kramer Jr., Nancy Kaywood, Michelle Emig, and Renee Ben. In addition, the resolution would allow the mayor to appoint a member of the youth commission to serve on the committee in an ex officio capacity in order to broaden the perspectives of the committee. The committee is anticipated to start meeting in the first part of January, and it could possibly be meeting weekly or twice a month, depending on what the recommendations will be. And that will be presented to the city council. All the recommendations have to be completed by March of 2022 in order to make the ballot in November of 2022. And just so, for your information, our next study session, January 3rd, we're going to bring the recommendations to you that staff has come up with, and also the ones that the city council emailed to us, and then we can have the discussion about it, make sure everyone's on board before we start the committee.
That gives the committee direction.
Yes.
Thank you, Stephen.
You bet.
All right, does anybody have any questions or comments on this? I think the committee is a pretty wide, broad section of our, you know, and informed members of our community. Mr. Powell?
I think they have an excellent group of adults. We have some youth people sitting in the audience. I don't know if they would be interested in something like that.
Well, we left it open so that we could, they could give us a recommendation.
Okay.
So that's kind of was left open, so that way, because we didn't get a particular response out of them, and they may need to talk a little bit more about it. But our intent is to have some youth member on the committee. Any other comments or questions? So that's your guys' charge, is to go back and find somebody to put on the committee, okay?
Or be somebody.
Or, yeah. And you can let Mr. Raines and myself know. And Stephen Weaver, too. Don't, I keep, sorry, Stephen. Stephen's kind of been running this, so I just saw city manager, you know. Any other comments or questions from staff? We do have short fuse on this, so we need to get moving on it. So if you guys don't have any more questions, then I'll call for a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5368, a resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, creating the temporary Casa Grande Charter Review Committee and authorizing the appointment of the committee members.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5368 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yep.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Excellent. So that kind of concludes most of tonight's business. We do have reports remaining, so I think I'll start with you, Bob, if you want to. Did you go first last time?
I'm ready to go first tonight.
Go ahead.
He's good old Bob. No, my only report is peace on earth, goodwill towards men and women. Amen. And Merry Merry Christmas to everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Bob. Lisa?
You know, not a whole lot, just I wanted to, I just wanted to tell you, you did a good job last week at the pep rally. Of course, we were celebrating Casa Grande Union's big victory, and Councilmember Powell got up as a former Casa Grande Cougar, and you did a great job, so.
Well, thank you.
Good job. It's exciting to see all the alumni and everyone come out, and the excitement is still going on. And then just, yes, happy holidays to everyone. I wanted to just, you know, send my, you know, greetings for holidays to our staff, you know, for the city staff. You know, it was so nice going to the city potluck. Last week, we ate a lot, right, Stephen Weaver? You ate, I think, everything at the potluck.
He's getting your reputation.
I'm pointing you out, he knew exactly where to go at that potluck. But, no, but, you know, to our wonderful staff, and, you know, it was a great time to celebrate with everyone, and just thank you for everything that you all do, all of our staff. And happy holidays and happy and safe New Years to everyone.
Mr. Powell?
Well, I was honored to be between professional football player Anthony Edwards that was out there, and I sat between that and the captain from the cheerleading squad from several years back, and she even had to move still, she was-
It was not doing anything.
She did well. And I want to thank Erin for being everywhere, being up there where the game was played, and being in Colorado, being back tonight. You covered some ground, but it was, it was one of the neatest things that's probably happened to our community in a long time. And when you looked across the field and you saw their group, they had a big group, and they had a good team. They didn't have as good a quarterback as we did, and they caught that ball, and 57-yard pass, it was amazing. But, you know, the other thing I want to say is those, all of those boys without anybody else were very, very faithful. Matt was there, and they really had good manners, didn't they? They'd visit with you, and so I was really proud of how the coaches has got them and all of them were invested in this, so. That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Powell. Matt?
Yeah, just real quick, Deck the House light tour is still going on through the end of the year, so make sure you get online and vote. Congratulations to the youth commission for the community service award, nominated by Donna McBride, thank you. The pep rally was a lot of fun, did a great job, and just Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and be safe.
Thanks, Matt. Donna?
Well, we're leaving on a good note, just a couple things. The public safety dinner happened last weekend, and they raised roughly $7,000. One of the things that they are using that money for is the Blue Santa, that they actually had over 300 children receive gifts in one day, so they really did a lot of good with that money. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, sometimes we get frustrated by social media, and I just want to highlight that if you've been on CG Chat and some of the social media, they've been doing the 12 Days of Christmas, and they have local businesses, small businesses, that provide gift certificates and prizes, and they're just finishing up. And this year, they had our local community businesses donated 75 different prizes that totaled about $8,800. And even at a time when everybody is struggling, they came together and really did some good things. And over the past five years, I think Darlene Mowley said, over $35,000 in prizes have been given to our local community members by local businesses. And I think that, you know, we need to recognize some of the great things that they do, so hats off to her and our local community businesses who take care of each other. And with that, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Donna. Well, ditto on all the Merry Christmas. Oh, Jeff, I'm sorry, Jeff. See, out of sight, out of mind.
Well, just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody, and compliments to Matt Mermon for bringing that holiday spirit tonight.
He never disappoints. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks, Jeff. All right, so, yeah, just a big Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody. I know Hanukkah's already passed, but it was a great ceremony we had here. And I also, just a real big thank you to staff also for a very tough 2021, but everybody's fared pretty well. Maybe consuming more alcohol than normal, but, you know, that's, I get it. Anyway, you know, I was out at Lusa today, I got a chance to get a tour around the Phase 2, and it is massive. I mean, I don't, I don't really, really think our community knows how big that project is. Just Phase 2, this is, I just drove around the 2 million square foot facility, it has all the footings reported, they've got all the steel sitting out there, it is just a massive undertaking, and they're going vertical on Phase 2 as of last, I think, last Friday. So, you know, Larry and I kidded each other a long time ago, you know, if we could just land one big thing, and, you know, if it was Phoenix Mart, or if it was Dreamport Village, or whatever, you know, we worked through all these projects, and it's so exciting to see all this come to fruition and all of the excitement over Casa Grande. I mean, I'm talking national excitement, I'm talking state excitement. I read the Phoenix Business Journal last week, and Casa Grande was mentioned three times in there for the TSMC support industry that's coming down here, which is the Taiwan Semiconductor, to Kohler, to Lucid. Lucid now has just been recognized in the top 100 for the New York Stock Exchange.
NASDAQ.
The NASDAQ, so it's one of those that they track now, so, I mean, that's a huge deal just in itself. And so it's, plus they're, you know, the Car of the Year, Motor Trend's Car of the Year, so just a lot of attention on our great community, and I just want to thank staff for all of you guys' hard work on that. It's really a testament to everything that's been laid before, from Donovan Kramer Sr. to, you know, to the current, you know, city council that we have here today. So I just want to compliment everybody, and I just think it's a great, a great deal, and you all should be, you know, patting yourselves a little bit on the back, because, you know, and then on top of that, we have the state championship, I mean, it's, you know, the sun's shining on the city of Casa Grande right now, so. So we're really blessed to be here in this position. We obviously need a lot of work still to do. I mean, just housing startups last month, we had another 97 new building permits just in the month of November, so we'll probably finish probably 1,500, 1,600 building permits for the total year last year. That's about a 40% increase over the 1,114 we had the year before. So it's just huge, huge numbers. And when I said earlier that, you know, I estimate in the next five years, probably 20,000 new employees, I, not employees, but residents, I'm serious about that number, that's a, that's a real number, and I think it's really doable. So with everything we've got going, we just need to keep on plugging on, and let's, let's make it happen.
You know I always have something.
Well, I'm not done yet.
I know.
So Donna and I have been working on, and with the help of our council, Brett, on our CG boards and commissions, so if you're interested in that and kind of the reorganization of it, we will be having a study session on January 3rd to discuss it. And I know Brett, you and Donna and I need to get together, so next week or so, if you want to set something up, so we can help kind of give you some guidance on that. That would be great. And then, let's see, what else did I have? Oh, this ASU Decision Theater, I know, Mr. Powell, you're interested in being a part of that?
I can or can't with you.
No, no, I've got you on the list, so. And then I'd also like to include a youth commission member on that. It's a, it's basically an engineering project where we're going to go up and visit ASU, they're going to show us how this decision theater works and the data that needs to be put into it, and it can help us answer questions on where do we need to put the next wastewater treatment plant, based on growth, based on planted lots, based on all the data we have and that we can put into this system, and it will help us kind of design it and give us suggestions. Yeah, need to know stuff for the growth of the community, and we could have it tell us where roads need to be. I mean, it will do a number of things. And so I've got a good list, thank you, Jeff, for the list. I think that that's a great start, and I'll probably use that list to build it, but you'll be hearing from me on that process. All right, so as we move forward. Good stuff, all of it, and Merry Christmas, everyone. And Mr. Powell has one last comment.
I always do. We have two people up here that drove one of those cars from Lexington, but either in here, and I guess that was amazing, wasn't it?
Three?
I did.
I've been in it, too.
Four of us. You did it?
No.
Oh, you missed out. You're going to just have to buy one now.
I ran out of gas.
It's electric, Dick.
That's right.
All right, any other comments?
No.
Okay. All right, Merry Christmases, everyone. Meeting adjourned.